Good evening, Mount Vernon. Welcome to the, Happy New Year, actually. Welcome to the September 3th, Mount Vernon City School District. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Madonna?
President.
Trustee Maribel?
President.
Trustee Mitchell?
I'm here.
Trustee Middleton?
President.
Trustee Njenga?
Here.
Trustee White? Trustee Kerwin?
Here.
Fippi Kelly?
Here.
President Saunders?
President.
We have our quorum. Student trustee De Grandpree?
Here.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Diana Rivera.
Hello, everyone. My name is Diana Rivera. My problem started in 2023, the month of November, the week of Thanksgiving. At that time, I had two of my children in high school, the first year of high school. My oldest son was going to Mount Vernon High School. My daughter was going to Steem County. My day was going well. Sometime after 3:00, I knew it was going to be time for me to meet my kids in front of the house to get them off the school bus. A lady came down the driveway with my oldest son. I thought she was a school maitre, but she wasn't. She asked me, "Was I mama?" I said, "Yes, that's my son." She says, "Okay." I brought him home because he was lost in the Bronx. I said, "Lost in the Bronx?" I said, "Well, I appreciate it. Have a blessed holiday." You don't know how I'm feeling right now. And at that time, my daughter's coming home. I was so angry, full of hate. I had nothing but negative feelings in me because the only thing I thought about, being that he's autistic, he has autism. I thought the worst thing that could happen. Rape, kidnapped, introduced to drugs. That was the worst thing a parent could... I told the person about my complaint, and I want him out of that school, Mount Vernon High School, because they didn't show me that they were very responsible for my child. Where his twin sister goes to. That's Thanksgiving, sitting at the table and enjoying a meal with my kids. I had a negative feeling in me because all I could feel was, what if I'm sitting at this table without having my oldest grandson with me? I picture him gone.
Now, my youngest boy. Today was his birthday at Mount Vernon High School. He had an IEP meeting in May, and that's when I found out that that was the high school he was going to go to. I did not want him in that school. That is what happened to my oldest son. So, I put in a request, and I stated, "Why aren't you wanting him there?"
In the back?
A few months later, Mom, and they denied my request. I've been calling the lady that sent me the letter. She never responded to my calls. I'm calling day in and day out, almost every day. I've had spoken more to my secretary than... It's out now. And they insist on keeping my youngest son...
In Mount Vernon High School. Public transportation, not public transportation, bus services because he has to take two buses to school. I cannot be out here, out there with him, waiting for the bus because I have to make sure my other two get on their bus, especially my oldest son, who has autism. So, that is my complaint. I don't want him in Mount Vernon High School for what I went through last year. And if they insist on trying to keep him in Mount Vernon High School, he needs bus services. He's asthmatic. He has a former seizure disorder from time to time, and he gets very nervous. He has anxiety.
Ms. Rivera, please try to wrap it up.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ward? Ms. Ward? And that's it for public comments. Thank you. Reports of their superintendent when we get it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. So, we started back to school today, and for the most part, we had a great opening. The reports that came back from the principals, everything was okay. So, I'm really glad to hear that. I wanted to talk about Graham School. In early August, a ceiling collapsed, occurred at Graham School. Fortunately, the room was unoccupied at the time, and no injuries were reported. The district responded swiftly by notifying the New York State Education Department and immediately began a comprehensive assessment of the situation. A full inspection of the building was conducted, and all necessary work has been authorized to ensure safety. The district has engaged a team of architects, engineers, and contractors to address the issue. Repair work is underway, and the building will be reopened only after it has thoroughly inspected, it has been thoroughly inspected and deemed safe by the engineers. The district promptly informed the community following the incident via a statement on mountvernasityschooldistrict.org. The matter was also addressed at the August 20th Board of Education meeting, and a special Zoom conference was held on Monday, August 26th, to update parents, guardians, and staff on the actions taken and the temporary academic arrangements in place. These temporary arrangements include remote instruction to start the school year. The district plans to provide another update to the Graham School community in the upcoming week regarding the progress of the work and the timeline for resuming instruction within the building. This evening, Dr. Jamal Doggett, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Dr. Satish Jagnand, Director of Math, Science, and Assessment, that's K to 12, will present the 2023-2024 Mount Vernon City School District iReady data.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, members of the community. We're going to be before you very brief today. We're going to give you the end-of-year iReady data results for the 2023-2024 school year. This is a follow-up from the presentation. It's not working. Turn it on, right? This is a follow-up from the presentation that was conducted in November with the beginning of the year, in April, when Mary Beth Rose presented the literacy brief and briefly touched on the middle-of-the-year data. So, now, iReady supports us as our universal screener, which is the administration of an assessment to all students in the classroom. The purpose of this is to determine which students may be struggling in preparation for grade-level reading. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Satish Jagnand, who's going to go through a few slides, and we're going to ping-pong back and forth through the presentation.
Good evening, Madam President and Board. I think the last time I presented, we presented the beginning-of-the-year assessment. And I just want to go through a few slides and explain to our community and all of our members what an adaptive diagnostic assessment, which is called the beginning-of-the-year assessment for iReady, is, and how it really screens our students into different levels. So, as you can see, I'm not going to read verbatim, but an adaptive assessment actually adjusts the difficulty levels of questions. So, students at the beginning of the year, usually the first two to three weeks in September... Oscar, this is on. They take an assessment based on their grade level. So, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, all the way up to eighth grade take a math and reading assessment based on their grade level. The adaptive assessment now will give them questions based on their grade level to start, and then it will adjust the difficulties. Why the difficulties? To get the students actually correctly graded in terms of if they're three or more grade levels below, two or more grade levels, one grade level, they're mid or on level, and then they're advanced. So, these questions, you might see questions on grade level, below grade level, and above grade level in order to get the students correct assessment in terms of grade levels. Obviously, we have some domains that are being tested in terms of content. And once the students finish their diagnostic, the results are used to customize. And the last time I spoke to you, there's three different types of customization in terms of the online piece. So, right here. So, there's online instruction. I'm going to use myself as an example. If Satish is three or more grade levels below, I will have that online platform. That means Satish will have personalized lessons based on his weaknesses and strengths. Then, the teacher will look at that data in terms of their small group instruction and provide Satish with the necessary lessons to get him back on grade level in terms of now that small group in reading and mathematics. And as we go through the cycle from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, which is usually 10 weeks, every five weeks, there's a progress monitoring to see if I'm making progress. Obviously, if I'm not making progress towards my goals, then we usually have to make some adjustments. Dr. Doggett?
Okay. So, understanding iReady. In this slide, we discussed in the education committee meeting last year. So, we understand the purpose of iReady and what it does for each of the three assessments. So, the beginning-of-the-year iReady assessment in ELA and math, the first diagnostic, is just to inform, to diagnose what the problems are, the challenge areas are, to come up with a plan. From that information, administration, teachers, they set goals. They create action plans for each student. They customize instruction, like Dr. Jagnand said, and this is for small group instruction. That all happens in the beginning of the year. So, when that report comes out, that data doesn't look very good because it's diagnosing the problem so we can put solutions in place. So, it does not look that way at the end of the year. In between, the beginning of the year and middle-of-the-year, we have progress monitoring, which is going to be a big focus of the MTSS this year. So, once we get to the middle-of-the-year assessment, there's been some progress monitoring in between. So, now you get the results. It's also to inform, but it's also to evaluate the process to make any adjustments as well. Progress monitor occurs for four to six weeks, two to three times, again, before they take the end-of-year iReady assessment in late May, early June. And that report is to evaluate the school year, evaluate the instructional programs, to evaluate the interventions put in place to inform instruction for the following school year. So, the data that we're presenting now helps inform us what we have to do for our core and intervention for this upcoming school year. Did I turn it off? Okay. So, now, I'm going to go to the results. So, if you look at the top, it's the beginning-of-the-year versus end-of-the-year K through eight reading. And the first type, at the top, you can see where we were as far as students on grade level. The goal of this is to have more greens at the end and less reds at the end. So, as you look at the beginning of the year, we have made gains from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. We pretty much had about 25% of our students increases in on or above grade level. We had most of our Level Ones decrease as well, and this is just in ELA. So, I wanted to come back to the community and show you the growth that was put in. This is from core instruction, small group instruction, MTSS, all the systems and instructional practices that we put in place. Now, this slide gives a better representation, and I also do want to add that remember last year is the year that we transitioned grades K and 1 to the iReady platform. For years, we've been using iReady for grades 2 through 8. Why are we going to wait to second grade to close the achievement gap on a platform that's that consistent? So, our K and 1 students are now in this group, so that may skew the data just a little bit. But if you look at our Tier 3 students, and those are the students that are at risk, you can see, first of all, there's a universal goal for the district, and I presented this in January, and I'll present it again once I go over the New York State data. We have a goal to reduce our Level 3 students by 50%. That's, we're always going to say that. So, as you look at our Tier 3 from the beginning of the year, we had 41%, and at the end of the year, we were down to 25%. We didn't reach to 50%, but that's a significant decrease in students receiving Tier 3 services. At the same time, we had a 22% in students in our Tier 1 that are on or above grade level.
So, in terms of math, before I get to math, what was the goal for every single student last year? So, in terms of minutes, I think we spent a lot of time communicating to our community. So, I'm going to ask you, board members, how many minutes were we requiring for every single student last year for the week? Everyone should be yelling out. 45 minutes, right? So, think about this. At the beginning of the year, I remember standing in front of you. You guys were, I'm not even going to use the word, some of you used, but, you know, you were very alarmed at these beginning-of-the-year results. But remember, our students just came back from almost two months of no instruction, right? So, they took an assessment to see where they're at. At the end of the year, I just want to make sure that we're understanding these graphs appropriately. For the students, so we started literally with 12% of our students in the green. That means that there are three or they are actually mid or above or early on grade level. Those are the students that usually perform at Level 3 and 4 in our state exams. So, at the beginning of the year, we started at 12%. At the end of the year, we were at 37%, okay? But that's not the best news. As Dr. Doggett said, every single year, you want to reduce your Tier 3 or your Level 1 students by at least half with all of the supports and interventions. So, how much did we actually reduce our student at risk from the beginning to the end of the year? Can you guys give me some numbers? So, we started Tier 3 students at about 45%. We ended with about 24%. That's pretty impressive for one year of putting in some systems around the multi-tiered support systems, which is called MTSS. So, one year of making sure that our students hit that 45 minutes a week in reading and math, you see the improvements. As Dr. Doggett said, it was the first year for kindergarten and first grade, right? We're transitioning now everyone to the iReady platform because we've seen the improvements with students who've spent 45 minutes every single week. I didn't say a day. Every single week, 45 minutes on their pathway lessons. Remember, Satish is three or more grade levels below. He has to do those lessons in terms of getting improvements and getting as close to grade level as possible. This is a really powerful chart. Oscar, next slide. As you guys can see, we reduced our Tier 3 from 46% to about 25%. There's some rounding that's involved. That's really great news. That means our intervention in year one, and many of you know that it takes three to five years to implement a system. So, in year one, we've shown dramatic increases in terms of not just our greens, but the reduction of our Tier 3 students. Okay, remember, it's year one. So, what happens after the diagnostic? I think we spoke about this last year. I'm just going to reiterate some of these, these goals that we're really looking for. So, after the diagnostic, our students, besides being placed on their pathway lessons, they're also grouped according to some of their weaknesses because now the teacher-led instruction during the RTI period, their instructional grouping based on what they're struggling with, the teachers can address that. Everyone is familiar with the pathway lessons. So, that means our students must go on and complete at least 45 minutes a week. That's the bare minimum we're asking, folks. Practice and instruction, obviously, what students need the most. And then that last one, the RTI instructional period. If we take Monday through Friday of this week, say we had a full week, there's three periods of RTI in ELA and two for math. The following week, it flip-flops. Three in math and two in ELA. So, if we're thinking about, let's do some math. There's a half an hour. I'm just going to round some numbers, right? Five periods every single week. That's 150 minutes, folks. We're asking just 90 minutes for ELA and math, the bare minimum for our students to spend. And you will see increases across the board.
Okay. So, next steps, we're going to be taking our beginning-of-the-year iReady in a couple of weeks for our students in grades K through 8. So, next steps until middle-of-the-year, we're going to have more professional development of the MTSS process with a specific focus on progress monitoring this year. We have created an MTSS manual that we're going to distribute to MTSS teams. And when I say MTSS, that's the RTI team and the PBIS team combined. We have data meetings with our principals. We're going to be monitoring iReady usage, and this is all for our intervention period. That's where the magic happens, the small group instruction. We have to give all our students the core instruction where everybody receives grade-level material. But during that RTI period is where the students get the targeted support, and the reading specialists and the math specialists provide intensive support. We also have the iReady student target goals incorporated into the teacher's APR this year. This year, they'll be rated individually versus group. We will continue with our professional development, specifically for all teachers, but specifically grades K and 1 and our administrators as well. We will continue with our additional supports with our reading and math specialists as well. Continue, next steps. What changes did we make? Not one. We want to work our program. We have a nice plan in place. So, we want to make sure the students spend 45 minutes a week conducting iReady lessons. And we're looking to have a parent workshop to discuss the importance of iReady with parents because now all our students have devices. They can do this online. And I do want to also say that iReady is just a resource. It does not replace explicit direct instruction from a teacher. I just want to make that clear. Teachers will continue to teacher-led instruction during small group instructions as well. That's the stations that occur during the RTI period. Conduct regular data meetings every four weeks to monitor progress. Again, that's a weak area as far as the MTSS and the district. We're going to work on that this year. And also to optimize our push-in-pull-out services. So, that's our plan. We're going to keep it. We want to keep this plan simple and consistent. And again, like Dr. Jagnand said, we had some decent gains in year one. This is year two. So, we should see more gains, and that data should be looking better and better with all the resource that you are giving us. So, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Yes?
So, I was taking notes. My first question is, what would you say are some of the factors that stopped us? And we did get close to hitting that 50%, especially on math. I saw that. But what would you say are some of the factors, the main ones that you saw repetitive that stopped us from truly hitting that 50 and maybe even going beyond?
Well, I wouldn't say stopped us. That's an ambitious goal that we set. So, when you set an ambitious goal, you got to reach highs. So, we did pretty well. But again, it's time. Students are also far behind as well. So, again, some of the Tier 3s, especially when they're three or more grade levels below, it's a long-term plan to catch them up. So, they may take two or three years to catch up. So, for example, the students that you saw in the red, they still may be in the red this year, but we want them, if they were at three grade levels below, we want them at one grade level below. But they still show up in the red, which also keeps the number down. So, over time, that's why we wanted to start kindergarten. Kindergarten, before the gap is wide. Let's close it before it even opens.
When do we start doing it from the kindergarten level? We just started? I'm sorry.
We started last year. Sporadically, schools, certain schools were doing it, like Rebecca Turnow was principal. We started it in 2017. And immediately, 2015, and immediately, within three years, we saw an improvement, immediately.
Do these iReady scores include special ed as well?
Yes.
Okay. And...
All the students in our district from K-8. So, to get back to your point, K and 1, you know, we had to do a lot of PDs in the beginning of the school year, right? For that transition to a... in the beginning of the school year, right, for that transition to occur. So by the middle of the year and the end of the year data, that's why it's so important for the professional development, as Dr. Doggett spoke about, not just the teachers and administrators, but also the parents. So that transition last year might have hampered us, if you're looking at some of the things that we really struggled with. But by the end of the year, say, all of our K one teachers were definitely on board. Obviously, we have a new cohort of K one teachers that we have to train this year, right? And that training is ongoing right now. We just started August twenty-ninth with a lot of those particular trainings. So we wouldn't have to spend as much time with the transition and the importance. Dr. Doggett also mentioned, Wanda, about the APR. As you know, it was linked to K eight. Globally, all the teachers receive the score based on the K eight data. Now, each individual teacher is, their APR is based on reading and math for their students. So I'm gonna use an example. If I have twenty-five students, we're gonna use fifty data points to see how many students met their typical annual growth. So if that's the investment that we're putting in iReady, and now the teacher evaluation is based on that, it's really contingent now on every single teacher in our K eight population to make sure our students get, well, how many, how many minutes again?
Forty-five.
Forty-five every single week. So sometimes when things are not really based on individual and holistically, not all of our folks are taking it as critical as we need them to be. So that's a major change.
But I would like to say that if a teacher has children, students that are two or three grade levels behind, we're looking at what they take them from the beginning to the, to where they are. Like, if I'm a second grade teacher, and if I have two kids coming in on kindergarten level, if I can get them to first grade or close to second grade, I've done my job as far as my APR.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They have to show growth.
Growth, correct.
Yeah, and they have to reach a specific target.
Yep, go ahead.
They have to reach a specific target that's set for that individual child.
Child, okay.
So when we spoke about it before, I think when we spoke in the meeting, you were concerned about an eighth grade teacher having students on fourth grade level, and how to get them all to eighth grade for that year. No, that doesn't work that way. There's individual targets set based on that kid's trajectory of success.
I got it.
Okay?
So yeah, let me give you a concrete example since you brought that up, because that's a really important point. If Satish is three grade levels or more behind, and I'm in eighth grade, and I scored a three-hundred-and-thirty on my BOY, the expectation is not to score eight-hundred on the end-of-year assessment. It might be, I scored a three-thirty, I might need to get to three-forty-five. Is the incremental growth?
Right.
This annual growth that I need to show? And how do we get to that growth? I have to ensure that Satish is doing his pathway lessons and spending forty-five minutes every single week doing that. So that's the key. Based on the BOY data, each student has an individual target.
Thank you for the presentation and the comprehensive data in terms of helping us understand how iReady works and the baseline data that is important for our students' growth. Questions that I, two questions that I have. Number one, do we have opportunity, do our students have opportunity for independent work with iReady? Either at home? And will that happen once you have these parent institutes to inform parents in terms of how this works? And the other question that I have is what other diagnostic programs are we using grades K twelve?
Great question. In terms of additional, absolutely. We would love students to go home and spend some time, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour every single week at home. But we know that it's contingent on the teachers being in the classroom. It's really important that our students are doing the forty-five minutes with the instructor in the classroom to make sure that they're monitoring, that the students are actually completing the work, completing the work at a high level, right? Sometimes when we go home, a lot of students are clicking away, and they have to now redo a lot of the lessons. So although we are pushing for forty-five minutes in the classroom, we welcome students spending more time at home doing some of these pathway lessons. In terms of our screening, yes, we do have some pre-K screening and kindergarten screening, but iReady is our universal screener for the entire district, just to be consistent in K eight.
My other question was, how much time on task does it take for staff members in order to administer these diagnostic assessments and also to grade them? And to, and is it loaded into some type of database for this analysis to be presented, or how does that work?
Yeah, you get immediate results. Students sit in front of the computer, the questions pop up, they answer it. It determines their levels, their strengths, their weaknesses. So I would say that within sixty minutes, they take their diagnostic assessments, and you will get the results for your entire class. So we're giving three weeks to conduct the diagnostic assessments, starting next week, and it's ending September twenty-seventh, I believe. And now we will have all the data in terms of now grouping students, knowing what their instructional plan is, and making sure they're doing their pathway lessons and their teacher-led lessons.
I guess one other question is, what are the other students doing while these students are performing these assessments?
So usually, it's all the students taking the exam in a specific class. Every single K eight building has a schedule of when the students are tested. So for example, I'm gonna use tomorrow at Williams, maybe kindergarten will do the assessment in the morning, and then the following day, grade two, and so on. So the students are tested based on the schedule that's established by the school.
Thank you.
And can I add to that? Sometimes they break them up into small groups, and there's a small group going on as well as some students are on the computer during iRed their own pathway.
Correct, correct. You know, for the RTI period, it doesn't have to be all iReady on the pathway lessons. You will have different groups based on the needs, because we will have students that have tested out on some of these, the iReady domains. So therefore, we have to find some alternatives for those particular students. If Dr. Doggett is mid or above grade level, and he's tested out in all of his domains, the teacher will find the appropriate resources to challenge him during that RTI time.
Dr. Doggett, can we have the scores broken down to grade in school? Since it's tied to the APR of the teachers, I would like to see. I know you have it somewhere, but I just wanna make sure.
Yes, I don't know if you recall, the December education meeting, we decided we were gonna discuss that information behind closed doors first.
Fine, but we will be able to talk about that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
When are we, I'm sorry. No, no, iReady went once.
Thank you for this, this is really very, very helpful. What's your expectation in terms of regression for when you do your beginning-of-the-year assessments relative to your end-of-year assessments that you did in the spring?
It's going to vary. The reason I say that, because the end-of-year is the end-of-year on grade level for the current grade that they're in. So the beginning grade, so for example, if I'm a fourth grade student, and I may score in the yellow, for example, at the end of this school year. The beginning of the school year, now I'm in fifth grade, I haven't seen the content, I'm just now making it, there's a possibility I can be read. So there's possibility that there can be some slippage based on where you are, because it is a new grade level. And also some other factors, how you take the tests, because again, you have headphones on, they could be clicking away, so there's some skewed information in there as well. But we don't expect much regression, but once we see where we are, we put the plan in place and work it down.
Are we releasing the information, the iReady scores at the building level to the people at all, to the parents at all? We're just not gonna let the parents know at the building level how iReady scored? Are we keeping that? Again?
Yeah, the teachers usually communicate the iReady scores to the students, parents can also log on.
Yeah, I know, that's usually at a conference night in November, though. Usually, they show, they show iReady at conference night in November. I'm asking, are we going to release these scores or something based on this schematic to the people on the district side? Are we going to, are we going to present, have something that parents can look at? See as, how did their building score? Are we gonna release anything?
I know the five-week report, right? We've released the beginning-of-the-year assessment. It's just a two-page report for each student, one in reading and one in math. Most parents now just log on to the portal and they'll see the actual iReady results, right? We do not print paper and pencil copies. Yes, absolutely. But to get back to the previous question, it also depends on how much time a lot of the students have spent over the summer on their summer work. Many of the students also spend time on the K eight summer school. So if they're spending time during our K eight summer school, the likelihood that they'll score better on the beginning of the year is very high.
So you take that into consideration, the summer score for the iReady?
No, we don't. So it all, everything is all depending on the beginning-of-the-year assessment. But I'm saying, if I spend time over the summer in our summer programs instead of doing other activities that are non-academic, the probability that I'll do better on the beginning of the year as compared to a student who didn't spend any time.
We don't track that? I'm sorry, Dr. Smith.
Um, no, we, we don't track the beginning of the year.
The summer, just to see the results of that academic...
We definitely can.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yep.
Question, just in relation to Trustee Mitchell's question. A parent can actually go in and see the day-to-day progress of their student based on the student portal, correct? So they don't have to necessarily wait for the five-week report in order to see what their iReady data is, right?
No, so if Satish takes the, if tomorrow, if Satish takes the beginning-of-the-year diagnostic, my dad, mom can log on and they will see the results. They will see my beginning-of-the-year score. They will see all the domains now. These are the content areas. There's six in ELA and five in math, my strengths and weaknesses. They will see all of the lessons that I'm assigned, that I need to do for this particular school year. So getting back to your question, it's literally just logging on, clicking on the report, and they will see Satish's, all of his plan for the entire year. Yep, you can see the last three years' historical data, so you can see that growth. Yep.
Thank you.
That is exactly the area we wanna focus on with parents, because we want to show them how to do that. And I do wanna, you know, thank the board and superintendent for giving us the...
You said you're gonna be instructing parents on how to do that?
No, we wanna provide PD, so we can show them how to log on.
That's going forward, or we've already done that?
We've done it last year.
Okay, that's...
But we wanna, we wanna actually grow it.
Okay.
This year.
Thank you.
Thank you for, you know, giving us this material for instruction. I definitely wanna thank the administrators for leading it. I definitely wanna thank the CNI team, and definitely thank the teachers. They've been doing a great job with the resources. They're balancing new, four new programs at one time, and we're still making gains. So they have the ELA program that's new, the foundations that's new, the new math program, they have MTSS. They're doing a lot, and we're getting the results. So I just definitely wanna thank the teaching staff for their hard work.
Slow and steady.
Slow and steady. I know you don't like that, but not too slow and not too ste, not too slow and not too steady. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, and that concludes the superintendent's report. So we will go into committee reports. We're gonna do committee reports today. We're gonna start alphabetically, so I'm gonna go to the audit committee.
Good evening, everyone. As far as the audit committee, we have not met yet. We will be meeting in September. So I will have a full report, perhaps, for the October meeting.
Thank you. Budget Finance Committee?
Budget and Finance, yes. So the Budget and Finance Committee met about five o'clock this afternoon, where we discussed preliminary, the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We actually, we met with the Business Superintendent and Bruce Singer, who is our consultant. And we were comparing the actual expenses to the last year. Right now, the financials will be audited in October. The external auditor is coming in in October to, to conduct the audit. We also discuss internal, the internal risk assessment. We should be getting that very shortly. We hoping to get that before the Audit Committee meets in September. And that's, that's it for the budget. We, the budget, sorry, the superintendent, Business Superintendent, he agrees that he will update the board with any changes that come up with our, our budget, right? Yeah. Okay. Also, I wanna say, as far as grants, I met with Dr. Gabiton and the grant-writing team, the outsider that we hired. There, actually, we are working on the Project Lead-Away Grant that will add science and engineering classes at STEAM Academy. Also, digital classroom grants that was applied for, that would build out a hundred percent digital classroom in about eight classrooms. They're doing a pilot grant that was applied for. So we're hoping to get those grants awarded. Title one, they're working, Dr. Gabiton and I, you know, after-school is really my baby. And so Title one is very important to me to have the parents have after-school programs. And so Dr. Gabiton have to have patience with me, because I will call her regularly to find out what's going on with after-school. After-school will be starting in October. There are, we have about, about two million that we will be billing out after-school. I would love to have after-school starts, like, right after, like, next week. However, we are streamlining the process, and after-school will be starting in October. Title one and Title four grants for after-school was submitted. Also was submitted was the special, I'm sorry, Smart Scholars Grant, MBK Grant and Pre-K Grant was also submitted. We are actively looking for grants with the grant writer. As I said, I, I met with both Dr. Gabiton and the grant writer to, to come up with grants. We are also forging new partnership for after-school programs. So we are inviting everyone, anyone who has any business for after-school to please contact the, the school district. We als, I also met with, this also, this ties in the budget.
Okay.
Okay. I also met with Jared Dennis with Dr. Gabiton. He, he has after-school programs for STEAM, Robotic. He will be coming back with the school district, which is very, very, very important. And of course, I in touch with Iona University. They will be coming back with the artificial intelligence program. I was advocating for four schools, but they agreed, they spoke to Dr. Smith and myself. They will be coming back with, just coming back in two schools. Just two schools where they were teaching the programs that would, was Mandela and STEAM Academy. But of course, I'm praying by the time they come back in October, they could extend that program. And I'm also working on financial literacy program, which includes investments. I think it's very important for students, especially from the eighth grade up, get them young to learn financial literacy and investment, hoping, hoping they could go on to be investment bankers, stockbrokers. That's our intention for the, for the kids. I think that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry. Also, we met with Tudor Doctor, who is local right here in Mount Vernon. Also, we met with Tutor Doctor, who is local right here in Mount Vernon. And that was Dr. Smith, Dr. Gabiton, I think, were you on the, and Adrian, or was President, Board President? And they are also offering, trying to partner with the, the school district to offer one-on-one tutoring for our students. That would be great if we could form that partnership with them. And so we, Dr. Gabiton and her office is working on, on forging that, that partnership with them. And I think that's all I have for now. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Kirwin. So we are going to the Claims Committee. The Claims Committee, we do not have a report, we haven't met yet. Education Committee?
Uh, Dr. Doggett has said for September 9th.
Facilities Committee, that would be Trustee Wanda White.
I had, I had one question for the Education Committee. Recently, parents who have children in Smart Scholars received a letter that the naming is called now the Lehman Program, I believe it is. Can somebody just explain the reason for that? No?
So, we have two programs, two grant funding programs. Smart Scholars and the Lehman Pipeline Program.
So the problem we have at STEAM is some parents want to be in both program. Smart Scholars is with Mercy University. And that is taught by our teachers who are trained through Mercy. They're almost like they're adjunct professors. We also have the Lehman Pipeline Program. Students have to go to Lehman to take science classes. So the proposal is to allow a Smart Scholar to also take Lehman Program courses as well. So the issue with it is, we had asked, is it double dipping? For example, I Marie could be a Smart Scholar and earn 62 credit with Mercy University and earn 62 credit at Lehman.
And those credits are only accepted at Mercy or Lehman?
No, they're accepted anywhere. The students receive transcripts. We had 100 students receive transcripts in June.
Thank you.
Right? So the issue is that parents want both. And as a district, we need to make a decision.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So I think, trust, hold on one second. Trustee Kirwin has a follow-up on that.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention that we met, when we say we, the Business Superintendent, Dr. Maribel, myself and a couple people from the Business Office, met with the Controller's Office and his team. And we spoke about the, the taxes that they owe, the city owes, the school district. And Dr. Morton says that they are working on making the district whole, hopefully by 2025. They have a couple of things in the pipeline that they are working on. Also, we all agreed at the table that the city and the school district should be using the same software. Because what's been happening is that the city cannot read the district software. They can't reconcile. And so that causing an issue on their side from reconciling the taxes. So we all agree that we will go out and, and look for the same system that both areas could use. So that way, we streamline the process and there won't be any deficit when it comes on to the taxes to the taxpayers. So I just wanted to mention that, I forgot to mention that we met with the Controller's Office. Thank you.
I thought we had the same software.
InfoTax we do have, but it's not the same. They can't, it, it's, I think there's readable, we have readable, I mean, Jose could speak about that, but it's.
Okay, I thought that we, that there was really the way that we were collecting them, that it was not reconciling with the city. So I think that there was really the accounting of it, not necessarily in how we, how we receive the taxes because we receive partials and the city can't account for them. I think it was that disconnect.
Right, and that only speak about the system. It's, it's about the software that we are using, that they can't, that it's not reconcilable.
Yeah, both were correct. So the partial payments was, was a thing that came up. And then they have InfoTax, but they also use a legacy system too. We don't have, and they're, I don't want to give too much detail onto that, but they use two systems. So we do use InfoTax and that's fine, but we also have access to another system that they have, but it's read-only. Thank you.
Point, we, both entities looking into having the same system so we could read the taxes for, from the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kirwin. So we're gonna go back to Facilities, Trustee White? Trustee White, Warren Mitchell, Donna Maribel and Trustee Helene Thomas-Ninja.
Mainly it's about Graham School. Trustee Mitchell has been following up on the Graham School, going around the building and checking. So he's gonna give that report.
Thank you. Just to fill in, it, we say that the ceiling collapse, it was, that was one room that opened up more of a probe that, that we realized that there was more that had to get done to ensure that we can keep the kids and teachers and everyone safe. So it's not just one room, it's not just one floor, it's actually three different floors, one of which has been completed and two other floors which still has work in progress. From my understanding, Mr. Ramundi, you know for sure, how are we looking as far as hitting that deadline of that 10th day? We're on, say again?
We're on schedule.
We're on schedule? Okay. So yeah, there was tiles removed, all kinds of work was done. I've also been going to some of the buildings to tour, to inspect for readiness. And I visited, I visited Parker, there are some concerns over there. And I went to Rebecca Turner, I spent the better part of about two hours there going through and looking at what's going on. We know the fire inspection is coming at the end of this month. We would like to see a year where we can get our certificates of occupancy without any hassle, no violations and anything like that. I'm switching over to uniforms and shoes. Our security guards and food services workers supposedly received their uniforms. For everyone who received all the wrong sizes and things like that, how, have it been communicated to them how that will be resolved? If they received wrong sizes and things like that?
Good evening. So anybody who received a size that doesn't fit because they chose the size. So if it was a pant and it was the incorrect size that they, we called every employee and all it was 250 employees to size themselves. If they put down an inaccurate size that, when it was delivered, I guess doesn't fit after they tried it on, we can swap it out for them.
So.
Except the shirts, those are printed, we own those.
So, all right, so I, and yeah, I remember you said that everybody was measured. Everyone was measured with one particular brand of clothing. So we all know that if I get a pair of Timberlands at a size eight, but if I go to a pair of Vasquez Gore-Tex, might be a size seven and a half. So if we're gonna change brands, we're always gonna run into that. But they have been communicated on how to get to you to get those changes. How will that impact us from a cost level? Because if the distributor, the per, the company we're contracted with, are they going to do even swaps where we will see no change and we won't be double paying, right?
Correct. They said if any of these, if any of the pants don't fit, we'll swap them out, no issues. We instructed all of our personnel for the shirts, even though here's your size, size up. It's always good to size up because sometimes things shrink. So everything was communicated. Anybody who is, I guess, has a size that they don't fit like they want it to, they go back to each department, I send a list off to the manufacturer, we swap it out. So we haven't paid for anything yet because I want to make sure everything is done the way they said it was gonna be done.
Okay, and shoes, we talked about shoes last time. Food Services, everybody's getting their shoes if they, if they need shoes, right? Thank you, I'm done, that's all I have for today. Oh, the walkthroughs are gonna continue also. I'll still be walking through buildings over the next few weeks for readiness so we can target things that have to get done.
Trustee Mitchell, can I, I'll talk to you about that in exact, about the walkthroughs, okay? Something I wanted to talk about.
Well, I just want to say congratulations to all our custodians, head custodians, cleaners and anyone that was in the buildings cleaning this summer. It was the schools that had programs that lasted from the 9th down to the 15th. They really worked to get their buildings cleaned. And I spoke to a few teachers and everyone was pleased with their building. So it was, I know it took some money, but we got it done.
Okay, thank you. Facilities?
Excuse me, I do want to ask, when are we gonna start back to a rotation on cutting the grass and making everything look decent?
So that, that has been ongoing. What happens is during the summer, if it's raining, you know, the ground crew has a very, very tight schedule where they have to visit 17 buildings in five days. And some of these buildings are massive. So if it rains, they can't cut the grass, it just damages the equipment. If there's been a lot of move requests because we're moving teachers around the building, we're moving some materials and supplies to the opening, sometimes that will trump cutting the grass. However, that issue at Parker, I spoke with the head groundsman, it's been taken care of during the walkthrough, so that was done. So as now, if, it all depends on the weather cooperating and if the employees are healthy and well and they come to work because if three people are out, that's, that's, you know, very damaging.
We have to make sure our buildings look decent from the outside, so. We might have to hire, get some predings in there to help out.
Okay, so.
We'll work with Civil Service to figure that out.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we just go back to the budget report with the meeting with the Controller? Trustee Kirwin, if we can just give an update to the community on how much the city now owes the district from that $11 million amount?
So from the $11 million, as you know, the city has an agreement with the school district. It was 11.7 million. And currently, they owe about $4 million is the balance. And also, there is interest that accrued, they, the interest was $2 million. I think they only paid down probably about $100,000 from that $2 million. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna go to Family and Community Engagement. We haven't determined who's chairing this committee. Initially, it was Trustee Middleton and Chris Madonna. Trustee Middleton is not, no longer on that committee. I will take it if no one else wants it and Trust, and Trustee McDonough. So we haven't had a meeting on that yet. On to Human Resources, that would be Trustee White?
Yes, we haven't had a meeting this month, our next meeting is 9/12.
Okay. IDA meeting, that would be Trustee McDonough?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week.
Thank you. Insurance would be Trustee Kirwin?
Insurance, we have not had a meeting yet. We'll schedule one shortly.
Policy Committee met two weeks ago. I gave that report at the last board meeting. Safety and Security, that would be Trustee Thompson-Njenga. Do you have a report?
No, my questions for the boots and sizing was already answered, thank you.
Thank you. Special Education, that would be Trustee McDonough?
Meeting scheduled for later this month.
Yes. Technology, Dr. Maribel?
Yes, we are meeting with Trust, Mr. Ramirez, and it will be next week.
Wellness, Trustee Mitchell?
We haven't met, but what we've been, what I've been chasing for some time is how food services is being handled. The, there's been plenty of concerns and issues related to how our students are being served and what they're eating as far as nutritional value, presentation, everything, quality of everything. There's plenty of things that I'm chasing down behind trying to get answers into the bottom of. But the motion is to, I'm sorry, the movement is to, first of all, get the true menu that we're gonna be feeding the students this year. And I'm hoping, I've been asking, it should be better than what we gave them last year and for years past. And our student trustee, Gonzalez? What's your last name? DeGronprey. DeGronprey told me a little while ago that she would like to be involved, so I will be calling on her for a couple times when we hopefully set up a taste test for trustees to come taste what we're feeding the kids as well. The menu, we want to see it again, we wanted to return to being consistent and accurate what's on the district site. The parents can see what the students are eating at the building level. And again, it's just about trying to ensure that we're getting what we're paying over $4.5 million for every year. And that includes what we pay the food service workers as well as all the things related to the cafeteria fund, which I would love to be educated on the cafeteria fund by Mr., Mr. Jose Formoso and Mr. Ramundi. I would love to, if you could possibly give us an education on what the cafeteria or the C-Fund is and what it's used for and how we're spending as well as actuals from the last year, that would be great. Thank you.
So Trustee Mitchell, when you have your next meeting, Trustee Kirwin, myself and Trustee Njenga are also on that committee. So when you schedule the next meeting, let us know, please.
Sure.
Thank you. That does it for committee reports. And the student trustee, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Trustee DeGronprey?
DeGronprey, thank you. So I recently sent out an email to the principals. I separated them for elementary and middle school. And I created a Remind account, which is basically like an app, let's like WhatsApp or something like that, but it is designed for more of an educational purpose. Many of my teachers have used it for communication between teachers and students, teachers and parents. So I sent that out to the principals and hope that if staff have concerns, students have concerns, anybody in any buildings, that they can reach me. And I also want to create a relationship with the student council members because they're the ones who will, not say, I don't want to say dictate, but they will run more stuff and have more. Yeah, information about what's going on.
That's great.
Great, I'd like that. So now we'll be hearing from most, hopefully, most of the schools and not just one.
Great, that's great, great news, thanks so much. So I'm gonna go on to old business. We switched things up a little bit, so I'm gonna respond to some of the questions that some of the committee members, community members had at the last board meeting. This is not a question, it was a statement of Girardi's Greenhouse that closed recently. And they're looking for a possibility of finding a home for seven greenhouses within the Mount Vernon City School District. This was from Jonathan Davis. The board, and the answer is, the board has not discussed this matter and is requesting additional information. And Board Liaison, Trustee Mitchell, I mean, Trustee Kelly is going to address that.
In order for us to receive any donations, it has to be approved by the district, which would include our legal and our buildings and ground. It's not as simple as accepting something because it's offered.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
And there is a sustainability factor.
Okay, thank you for answering that. Your name was attached to that. Okay. Another question, there is a, is there a contract that the acting superintendent will come back to? The answer is Dr. Smith is acting superintendent pursuant to her contract until June 30th, 2025. Next question, is there a salary increase involved? No, there is no salary increase. Next question, Sylvan Learning Center, why are we paying them $65, $65 an hour? Why not give, why not give it to our teachers who are only making $44 an hour? The answer is, Sylvan is written into two grants. The grants cover the course and it cannot be changed since the amendment period is, since the amendment period is over. Next question, how can your child participate in the Sylvan program? Answer is, principals give out a list of all levels, one and two students, as well as students who still need, who still need regents. Parents are being contacted, that was the answer. What's going on with teacher contracts? I don't know, but the answer is, the teacher and the district have jointly filed a mediation given the parties are in pass. Next question, the literacy program started on, in August for $41,887. For September through June, the amount is $44,550. Why is it almost the same amount for one month as it is for one year? The answer is, drumroll, the admins are paid at their individual summer hourly rate, which is most double in most cases than the yearly after-school rates at $55 per hour. And the last question is, $10,000 raise, why did the lawyer get this raise? He's pretty much worth it, but the board approved all contracts in compensation. The district council was contracted for one year. And at the end of the year, the superintendent and the board and the council entered into. and the board and the council entered into a new agreement with an increased compensation. And that's it for old business. Now we can go on to our resolutions. Oh, there was one more question as to a ROTC program. The board can't afford the ROTC program. We hear that it's over a hundred thousand dollars, so we cannot afford that at this time.
Well, ROTC or one of the, what, the Army, I don't know what we had a few years ago, was the Army ROTC or?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes.
Oh.
It was the Army.
It was the Army, and they're not contributing any money or trying to make us be part of them?
So there are two programs. There are two programs. One where the military will pay the teacher and will pay for the equipment in the student's uniform. There's one where we pay for the teacher and they're subsidized. I have spoken to them, I've met with them. It is not something currently in our budget, but I am out there looking for any grant, any organization who wants to partner with the district that will help us fund it. The program where the government pays the teacher would still cost us over a hundred thousand dollars with uniform and to maintain the equipment and to provide room to pay for the exercise. So if anyone's out there would like to partner with the district, we're more than welcome. I did meet with the ROTC office, and I did put our name on the list for any grant and scholarship that we could partner with them. But for this year, I don't see it happening. Maybe next year. But I do welcome anyone who wants to partner with us.
Thank you, Dr. Gabotan.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our resolutions. Have a motion for five point one, human resources, one one zero eight, certified.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Trustee Maribel, up with you?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yeah. Motion carries. Have a motion for five point two, approval of human resources resolution, non-certified.
Motion.
Second.
Question?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Has all of these positions been posted properly based on the union contracts? So they've all been properly posted? So we won't find any of these positions that have, that have not been posted? And do we have the backup for the posting and for the executive content?
It should be in there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay. One moment. Trustee Maribel, you oppose?
Oppose.
Trustee Middleton, you abstain?
Aye.
Mitchell, you abstain? Have a motion for six point one, approval of field trips for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for six point two, authorization to enter into an agreement with Wilson Language Training Corporation for Professional Development Services.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Is Wilson being, being offered to all the special ed, because I know a lot of them, special ed teachers, I should say, because a lot of them have already been trained. Is this new special ed teachers or?
This is everyone in grades K through three, general ed and special ed.
Oh, everyone's doing Wilson now?
This is foundations.
That says Wilson, doesn't it?
Yes, just the parent company.
Oh, okay.
Yes, of foundations, yes.
Thank you.
What were the grades? I'm sorry.
K through three.
K through three.
Yes.
Question, was there a, was there a bid or process that we had to go through for this?
No, just the professional development, the PD package was above the procurement policy. That's why I had to go before the board.
Thank you. And will we see, how will we see or measure, will we see data?
Yes.
Shows the growth and progress?
Yes, it's also embedded in IRADY. You can see some of the phonics and phonological awareness results in the IRADY. When we break it down further in the IRADY reports, you definitely can see it in there. But we're also going to focus and strengthen the assessment piece for foundations this year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for six point three, approval to update staff for the K to eight literacy planning committee for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
It's broken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for six point four, appointment of technology links for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for six point five, authorization to hire staff for the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility during the fall, during fall twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Who was that, that second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for six point six, authorization to enter into an agreement with Carl Caprio for the greenhouse initiative.
Motion.
Second.
Question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, we had, we used to have gardens in some of our elementary schools on the grounds. It was, it was funded by maybe sometimes teachers, but it was a really good learning experience for students, and this is actually the season when we should be starting to plant the seeds so that they'll grow. I'm wondering if there's anything of this, oh, I'm wondering if there's anything of this greenhouse program that we can use as a launchpad and actually spread throughout the district to different schools in our district as well. You know, because what it does is it gives the kids the ability to come out and actually learn how to garden, grow different vegetables and fruits, and then at the end of the season, before they go home for the holidays or the summertime, they could take that stuff home with them. Is there any idea that we could do something like that?
I can answer that. The greenhouse initiative is also part of the Grow Bag. What we did, I don't know if you remember, there was a presentation for the Grow Bag, but we are trying to re, I don't know.
Revitalize.
Right, revitalize our resources in the district, which means there's a pilot program that this is, involves Graham, Lincoln, Rebecca Turner, and Mount Vernon High School. And that is, it's farm to table, so we'll be supporting other programs, but the curriculum has been developed by Dr. Doggett and his department, the curriculum and instruction, and those are some of the accolades I was giving to the people who are involved in making these programs a success. Mary Beth Rhodes has been very instrumental. And Mr. Caprio, who was recruited by our acting superintendent, came out of retirement to do this program, which will be a Saturday program, and he's going to expand the greenhouse initiative.
Is everybody, can we just show up?
Louder, louder.
Can we just show up? Do you want to come to those Saturdays?
I would suggest, right, we work through the district. I don't think it's a closed program, but I think that we need to work with the district in visiting, and I'm sure that that won't be an issue, but I don't want to say that it is or is not until I get clearance from the district. Perhaps we can maybe set up an appointment so that we can all go and maybe set up a schedule where we can go visit, if that's possible.
Sure. That's your answer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for seven point one, approval of pupil personnel services memorandum number three dated September third, twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for eight point one, authorization to start emergency repair work at Graham School.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
What are you going to do? Second motion?
It's my emotions already.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for eight point two, authorization to award Delta Electric, bid number two zero two four dash two five oh five for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Motion.
Second.
Question?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
This is lowest and best bid? Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. I have a question. So is this, so is this for the emergency work at Graham, or is this for them to be our electrician for the year?
For our electrician for the year.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for eight point three, authorization to award Crown ACHP bid number two zero two four dash two five dash oh six for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Roughly, from what I'm seeing, we've been, Crown has won the bid, looks like the better part of nine years straight, back to back. We have a track record for our success for their serving our district? We do? Okay, thank you.
Question, again, lowest and best bid? Thank you.
Best bid. They're good. How do you score?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
President Saunders, you abstain?
I did.
Yeah, I got you. Motion carries. Have a motion for eight point four, authorization to award bid number two four dash oh five dash oh one to KGND Architects.
Motion.
Second.
Second. I'm always a day late, not a short.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Lowest and best bid?
Different bid. This was based off the RFP committee's selection for bond architects, so the committee reviewed it. We sent it to our in-house counsel also to review our in-house engineer, and this was the recommendation they, they gave the district.
How many submissions did we receive from the RFP?
Six.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the one that did the building condition survey?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for eight point five, authorization to correct rebid number two zero two four dash two four four R transportation contract bids to rebid number two zero two four dash two five zero four R.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for nine point one, authorization to approve the risk assessment audit report as prepared by the district's internal auditors, Tobin and Company, for the year end in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, I have a question. I would like if Jose could explain to us why we're getting this, this late, this is a year late. If you could please explain to the board and to the community, please.
Thank you. So, in terms of why it's late, I can't, I could tell you exactly what happened. So this was submitted last year to the business portal, which is what we're supposed to do. It was, there was an error in the submission by the prior business official, so we went to resubmit it. We noticed that it was not approved by the board, so that is why we are now presenting it to, to the board now, because that is part of the compliance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we still using Tobin?
No, no.
No.
No, I thought we had got.
That's why it's late.
This is from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, let me clarify, it's a prior, it's a twenty-two, twenty-three school year when Tobin was still the auditor. Now we're using Milwaukee Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for nine point two, approve the settlement tax proceedings for JKM five ten South Fulton Avenue Realty LLC.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for ten point one, approval of amended consultant agreement between Alan Gonzalez and the Mount Vernon City School District.
Motion.
Second.
Question?
Questions, concerns?
Just want to understand, the reason for this amendment is just because it was just miscalculated the first time it was presented to us?
Louder, please.
I'm sorry.
No, not, not you, there was a response.
Oh, there was a response?
Yeah, I couldn't hear it.
Oh. The question just was, the question just was, just to confirm, the reason for this amendment is because there was an error in how it was calculated the first time it was presented to us to vote, correct? Correct. Thank you. That's what I needed to know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for ten point two, approval of a consultant agreement between Lisa Otori and the Mount Vernon City School District.
Motion.
Second.
Who's second?
That was you?
Right, Wanda.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Lisa.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for eleven point one, approval of implementation of emergency remote instruction for students attending Graham School for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, effective immediately for ten days.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So ten days, is that, is that something we're going to write in stone? Can we put more, or if we need more, we're going to have to come back and get a resolution for that?
New York State allow, because we are declaring it as an emergency, allow the superintendent to go online for ten days to do the instruction. Anything above the ten days, the commissioner would have to give us approval. So we in our registration have already come up with a plan in case it is more than ten days.
All right, we have Plan B.
And C.
Dr. Dr. Gavatton, not all students will be, um, remote?
No. So I've had about eight parents who've sent me email and explained due to their circumstances would like their child to be transferred. Those transfers have been done. They've been submit, I submit to them a temporary transfer. Once the building is back, I will move the students back. But all parents who ask, I reply to the email within twenty-four hours. And I've moved the student instantly and they get notice that the students been moved.
Thank you very much.
So, Dr. Gavatton?
She's been very busy today, so I appreciate your, um, your help.
Thank you. We had a hundred new students register today.
Good job.
So.
So I have a question. So if additional parents request their parent, um, their students to go to, um, different schools, is there still accommodation, is still be provided for these students?
So what I did, once I was told this happened, I look at all the building and wait who had the most or least registration. So I immediately close Honors Academy because it's down the hill from Graham. So students who should be able to go there from, um, home, I spoke to the principal. I explained that I shut down rebuilding, except for anyone who lives in the zone. So any parent who would like, their students would go there temporarily, then I move them back. All arrangements have been made. All parent have to do is ask.
I have a quick question, um, if they wanna stay?
No.
Okay.
We really encourage zone schools. The reason I say no is because basically what I'm doing is I'm prioritizing Graham parents over those who live in the neighborhood. For, uh, for example, currently our kindergarten is at fourteen, there's four more seats. So I'm giving those four seat to a Graham student and instead of a honors student. So we really want the students to stay in their zone school for as much as possible. Also, that would mean we would have to shift staff. And when switched, shift staff, sometime staff leave because they don't wanna be in that building. But we, basically I am prioritizing Graham's need right now.
Question, so what happens to those four kindergarten students who are zoned for that building and they're denied access?
We go to the next school. So when I plan registration, I always leave Wiggle Room and the next school. So if this honors full, Lincoln has room, they'll go to Lincoln. So I try to do the closest school.
So question, so once those students from Graham go back to Graham, then the students that are at either Lincoln or wherever, where do they end up going? Either, do they change schools in first grade? Do they stay where they are kindergarten?
Sometime parents will ask to transfer back, right? Most time what we find is a parent like to stay at the school that they are in. But before we move a student that doesn't, like, for example, Edward Williams eighth grade is currently closed. The next school is Benjamin Turner. We tell the parent that and they get the option to go back the next weekday. So wish, or they could stay.
Just a question, so why wouldn't we prioritize students in their district school to allow them to go to their district school and give Graham's school students an option to transfer so we wouldn't have to keep moving them back and forth after they fix the building?
Ask that question again. I need some clarity.
So for instance, I have a student at Graham who can't attend school, they're remote learning, but they wanna go to another school. So you send them to Honor Academy because it's closest to their home. So then the student that is zoned for Honor Academy gets to go to Lincoln School. And then at the time that Graham School now reopens, you'll move the student from Honor Academy back to Graham, but you'll leave the other student at Lincoln. Why not just let the student that's zoned for Honor Academy go to Honor Academy? Re, let the Graham student go to Lincoln and stay or go back to Graham? Instead of shifting all these students around?
Okay, so we have five schools that most parents usually want to go to. These schools, grade one through five tends to be full. For example, Pennington, they have two section, they're full. Most of the Graham parents either wanted Honor or Pennington. There's no room, right? So the next school is Honors. Now, sometime what I'll do is, if I Marie, I live in the honors zone, that's the school I go to. Honors currently, unlike all other schools, have two to three section of each grade level. Right? So originally Honors was under enroll. They had, um, less students to begin with, which is why it was easier to choose Honors as the school for Graham. The only grade that is over enroll, why not Honor, was kindergarten. And they have three sections.
So again, if I'm a kindergarten parent and I'm zoned for Honor Academy, but you won't let them go to Honor Academy, you'll send them somewhere else. And then in the first grade, where do they go? They stay at Lincoln for the rest of their tenure, their time?
The parents want to, a lot of times the parents will want to and sometimes they don't.
So my, so the Graham students are not displacing anybody in those schools, are they?
No, they're not. Honors Academy had additional section added to them to accommodate the parents at Graham. They have additional section. And Honors originally was under enroll. For example, Honors has two section of eighth grade, they had sixteen students in that, in that grade.
So just from your assessment, it seems like you're impacting two students as opposed to one. But I'm, just a ques, just an assessment, just an observation.
Um, Dr. Gavatton, um, we said we, um, had a hundred students registered, new students coming to Mount Vernon School District. What's the process? How long does it take to process these new students into one of our schools? Not, I'm not talking about the displacements, I'm talking about new students.
So most of the parents who came to, they did the paper application. So the registrars have to basically type everything into the paper application, upload, verify the residency document. So it might take between three to four days. However, keep in mind, registration opened in March. From March to now, we've had almost nine hundred new.
Nine hundred?
Nine hundred new student.
So these are new students coming in to the district, that new residents of Mount Vernon?
Yes. What we are seeing is a pattern of a lot of people coming from Yonkers. Yonkers had, um, they did a re-registration. And if they, they found people who live in Mount Vernon and Yonkers, Eastchester did the same, Toccohod did the same. So those students are coming back. So, and also we noticed an increase in students from the Bronx, people moving here to Mount Vernon.
And so are we verifying the addresses?
Yes. So parents had to give pre-proof, they have to give their, their lease or an affidavit that is notarized. They also have to give us a Con Edison or a utilities bill, a pay stub, so we have a list. And also the registrars double check if they're person on the home with the assessors office.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad. Nine hundred.
That's great.
And we also send out the attendance teachers to check.
Oh, okay.
So you say it takes about four or five days for them to get into a regular school, I mean, to the system? Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. You have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular personal corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular personal corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter. You need a motion?
Second.
Wait, who first?
I did.
Oh, okay. Questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
I don't think so.
Motion carries, we are in executive session.